All right. Thank you. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lake Worth Town Council on this September 11th, 2018 at 5:00 PM. I would ask you all to please rise. Gentlemen, remove your caps. We'd like to say a brief invocation and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Please put your heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings you've bestowed on our community. As we gather here in public service to our town and its citizens, we ask for your divine guidance and wisdom to help us govern effectively, to do what serves the greater good and best interest of our citizens, and to be good stewards and guardians of this beautiful place we get to call home. In your name, we humbly ask these things. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. We'll begin our meeting by addressing the agenda. And we have an agenda before us. I understand there may be some changes. I would ask the commissioners to propose any changes or revisions you might want.
As you know, I never have any. But I only have one this time. And it's to move Consent Agenda E to New Business H.
Okay.
There's some discussion we need on that particular budget.
Okay. Did mention, does anybody else like to make any other changes or revisions? If there are none, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda with that one change.
I'll make that motion.
Commissioner Cameron makes the motion. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Kilby. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay. That brings us to my item on the agenda, which is the Mayor's Communications. And I have a pleasure tonight to introduce to the public the several new employees of our town. We're very proud of the quality of staff that we have, and I think we've done a great job of adding to that high-quality and high-caliber staff that we're blessed to have here. And so, there are actually four folks that are here with us tonight from staff, and I'll go ahead and introduce them in no special order. And I would ask them to stand so people can identify with who you are. And some of you, I'm sure they've already seen you and worked with you, the first person here. Those of you, some of them you would not normally see out in public on a regular basis. So, I want to begin with Shalinda Pruitt. Shalinda, would you stand? Shalinda, you see her smiling face? When you entered Town Hall, she has replaced Michelle Jolly, who used to be that smiling face. And now, Shalinda carries out a number of different administrative functions, in addition to being sort of our welcome wagon person at the front desk. She takes the phone calls and refers folks, and she's just basically the face of the town of Lake Worth. And so, we want to welcome Shalinda Pruitt. Thank you very much. And the next person, I know you've seen her out here very often. She's been coming to Town Council meetings for quite some time. She's Laura Cratchit. Laura, did I say that last name? See, I got Shannon to brief me on that, so I'll try to remember that. But Laura is a new Director of Communications?
Can you say so?
Whatever. Yeah, basically, that's where she is. And most of you know that in the past, we've had Valerie Hoffman performing those general functions, marketing and communications for the town, creating things like news releases and information in the website, and updating the Facebook, and basically trying to be the mouthpiece, if Shalinda is the smiley face, she is the mouthpiece of the town. And we are really utilizing her services this week to the max as we try to keep the public communicated about what we're doing in advance of the hurricane. So, welcome to have you, Laura. It's been a pleasure. And we have a new young man who is working now back with Brad in our planning and zoning group back there, Garrett Murphy. Garrett, would you stand? Garrett has now become Brad Junior. From what I can tell-
Better protect your hair.
Brad's been teaching him everything he knows, which I don't know if that's good or not, but Brad seems to have done extremely well in that position, and I have high hopes that Garrett's going to follow right in his shoes. And so, if you're coming in for permits or approvals, or just want to know about what it takes to get things built in Lake Worth, I'm sure Garrett is going to be a person you interface with frequently. And then, last but not least, is Carl Landrum. Carl, would you stand, please? Carl is a new member of the Public Works team, and he fills a brand-new position we added. David needed a little more help, and Carl is that person. And so, I've seen him out there every morning, it seems, when I'm on my way in to Town Hall, doing various things around town. So, I'm sure most of you probably have already seen him if you do much traveling in the downtown corridor here. So, Carl, welcome. It's good to have you. All right. Well, thank you very much. Now, that'll kind of move us on into the Town Manager Communications. That would be item number four. Shannon, you have several items to report on here.
We do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the things I'd like to let council, you already know, but also the public, we have what we call weekly management team meetings. And on Mondays at 10 o'clock, I meet with department heads, and we go over then the things that we need to be focusing on and working on. If they need additional resources, if they need to partner with another department head, that's a time for them to talk about that so that we can move forward with the projects that we have in motion. And then also, our department heads will be here at all of our monthly Town Council meetings, and they will be available to council to answer questions as issues come up on the agenda. And from time to time, they may have things on the agenda that they need to stand and make presentations about. So, they're going to be more accessible, more available, and we're just trying to increase communication between myself, council, and the public. So, these are some of the things that we'll be doing. And then, I'll be submitting a month report to council. Town Council already has a month report from all the departments in their packets, but in addition to that, I'll be giving council kind of a highlight on the projects that we will be working on, that we consider significant projects. The first thing, we're going to ask some folks, council or department heads, to come to the microphone. We're going to talk about the hydroelectric plant. So, David's ready to give us an update on that. David, if you will.
We have resumed work on the little generator. Since Donnie got back from vacation, John has been working pretty hard on that little unit. There's still some hiccups. He was within an inch of putting the top cap over the scroll case, which encases the wicket gates and the impeller and everything. He was within one inch of closing it up, and he had one of the shafts, or actually, a couple of the shafts that were trying to bind up and get tight in the bushing. So, he's pulling it back up. He's going over, and each one of the bearings, bushings, I should say, and he's honing them out to make sure that all the clearances are where they need to be, and all those wicket gates turn like they need to. Because those wicket gates, when you shut that unit down, that's what cuts the water off. And if one of those stick, and you can't close those gates, then naturally, you don't stop the unit. So, we are still in the process of doing what we can and trying to move forward, but it is a slow go. But John's saying, hopefully, once he gets that thing closed off, you know, it starts setting the big. I call it big. It's huge, but it's the small generator itself back over on top. He says that part of it should go a lot quicker, but getting everything tied together down in the bottom is time-consuming. So, anybody got any questions?
Is he, when he says he, do we set a date of October 1st as a target date? Is that still holding?
That's what we're hoping for. That's what we're hoping for. I don't know what we're going to run into from here throughout the end, but I do know rather than being a backup operator now, he is back in the groove of working on the generator pretty well full-time, dedicating his time to that rather than being an operator.
Prior to the budget discussion in June, there had been work going on at the pin stock with welding and stuff. Is any of that continuing still?
We actually-
What's the status?
We actually have some money in the budget, and I plan to contact the welder that we had there before and try to get him back in to work on what we consider to be some critical areas. There's not enough money budgeted to completely redo the pin stock, by no means, but there is some money there to where we could work on some of the worst areas, and we plan on doing it, yes.
Okay. Any anticipation as, when you say you plan to, any anticipation as to when that might begin, or when you might be able to make contact, let them set up a timeline?
I have actually talked to the welder already one time. His schedule has got him pretty busy, and our schedule as well. I told him I would try to get back with him in a few weeks. That was a week or so ago, and I have not got back in touch with him thus far, but I will.
Okay. I thought I saw something in one of these reports, and there's so many of them, I haven't been able to figure out exactly which one it was in. Okay. Thank you.
Are we doing a lubrication on the raceways or the railing going up the side of that pin stock? So, when we do try to open it, close it, it's going to move rather than being rusted in place?
You're talking about the can out in the lake? Yes, we have greased the rollers and stuff. They have been some grease fittings and stuff replaced that look like, have appeared to have been there for a long time.
Like, that's what my concern is. Stuff freezes up, and then the one time we need it, so it's locked up, it won't move.
I agree. And we have looked at it, and we have greased what we could get to. We have not ran the thing up and down a lot of times because, you know, what's there? Yeah. But we have done everything we can in-house to, if we need to move it, to where hopefully we can.
And you've inspected all the cable connections and make sure there's no rusted bolts or anything there that'll break or anything like that?
Nothing. You're talking about on the electrical end?
But also on the cable end, for the cable that connects to that plate.
Right. I have not personally, no, because I have not, it's the inside of that can, and I have not been in there to it.
Okay. I'm just concerned even if we need to drop a camera, but you know, those have a lifetime to them, especially the pin through them.
Right.
If that rust and deteriorates, which it's got 90 years on it now.
Right.
I just want us to be as proactive as we can until we can change that motor, make it as easy to roll that thing up and down, so just fuse for thought.
Okay.
I found the entry on the report, and it says, "I met with underwater contractors at dam today about repairs." Is that the name for the-
No. That is a contractor that came out that was putting, I guess, quotes together for Snabble to do with the dam repair. And I met them out there, and they looked at some things, and, but they also said that they do pin stock repair. They do hoist repair. So, and I've got their card, so if they get to work with Snabble on this contract, that may be a good source for us to talk to about the things that we need to do.
Yeah, I mentioned that during that meeting when we selected Snabble about the fact that we need a higher priority on those two items because of the importance of them.
Yeah, I questioned those guys with underwater technologies when they were on-site, you know, about the few things that we need to address, and they said, "Yes, we do both of those." So, it was good to know.
The last thing that was concerned to me is you had an entry that the flow at the treatment plant was 460,000 gallons on a particular day.
Yeah.
That's high. What happened, or there's nothing to indicate what might have caused that problem, or did we know what caused it?
That number is all over the place. I mean, right now, we're 600,000.
Oh, my gosh.
So, it's up and down. Of course, I know we have a lot of people probably in town now for the games and stuff such as that. We have not visibly seen anything that spiked dramatically, you know, to give us an idea that there's a broken line or something, but it's gradually, gradually comes up and it gradually goes down. But there's a lot of flow there.
As we lower the lake for the storm-
You're dropping, yeah.
We could monitor that.
Yeah. And we'll watch it.
At certain elevation-
That's exactly right. Yep.
Correlate that. Yeah. I would just, I guess, commend John and Donnie, whoever's running the generator.
Yeah.
We had another good month last month, $76,000.
Yes.
It was over 60 the month before, and then we had like $100,000 a month before that. So, we are way well ahead of our budgeted projection of 400,000 for the year.
We need-
This won't be a bad month either.
Right.
Plenty of water out.
Those guys are working hard, and as long as the water's out, they're trying to keep the generator running.
Yep. We're running 24/7 now.
David, I know you don't need something else for your plate, but I've noticed we've got two spots on the lakeside looking at the dam where there's vines, pretty good-sized vines growing up the backside. If you, you might look at those, we don't need to get that started.
On the backside of the-
Dam.
Okay. Over to the-
Toward our lake ops.
From the left.
Yeah. From my place to the right, toward our lake ops.
Okay.
They're getting a pretty good hold. If those things get started, it'll be hard to eliminate.
Let me look at it and see what we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Appreciate that.
Next, David.
Report on something.
Next item is lower speed limit in Town Center. That's something that we've worked on a little bit, and Mr. Burton is going to talk to us a little bit about process and what we've done so far.
Good evening, gentlemen. Whoops. This will be about the third time that I've been dealing with NCDOT as to this potential change of speed limit. We actually were approved at our last, the last attempt that we did, and that was moving the speed limit, the 25 mile an hour speed limit, from where it starts at 35, going out of town, right adjacent to the condos, moving it up the hill, almost adjacent to the seven pond. That was approved by the state. We got all the information that we needed, got the things that we had to come and have adopted by you folks, and it appears that we, that I was not provided any information about the Littlemont Trails and the stuff that were going in there. And so, looking at that from a planning perspective and good common sense, we're going to, and we've got a new sidewalk on the other side, we're trying to redevelop a center that's there right now as well. Some other real estate up and down the road for sale. So, there's a pretty good opportunity for increased pedestrian traffic through there. So, it's my understanding that there has been some talk, and I think it happened at the last Parks and Rec meeting. Commissioner Weber brought it up.
More of that, actually.
Okay. And the idea was to essentially replicate the speed limit coming out of Chimney Rock Village, keep it 25, run it 25 all the way through town, all the way past Dan Brendan Store, up the hill, all the way to Harris Road, just past the public office. And is that correct, Commissioner Weber?
Yes, that's what the Parks and Recreation Board recommended, but I was sort of thinking that we should have a discussion if that's really what we want to do before we ever go back to DOT.
Absolutely.
And that hasn't happened yet.
Correct. And I have, I'm ready, when you guys make a decision, I'm ready to go, because if that's something that you want to do, I have been in contact with Hannah Henderson, the professional engineer with Traffic Division of NCDOT, as well as another gentleman that were involved in the first round, and they're, they just let us know when the trigger's pulled, send us the information. So, that's a point of discussion for you gentlemen, but we're ready to go on this end.
Brad, what did you bring with you?
I've got a copy of the letter that I prepared and a copy of the map that's going to be submitted to them as part of that process. I've got enough copies for everybody if you'd like one.
Sure. Sure. Why not?
Brad, I've actually been behind four cars the last two days. I think they said that 25 starts at the point of view, and it's already approved.
That's true. That's very true. Very, very true. It's not going on a lot.
Well, you know, this actually fits into part of the Police Department report from the chief, where they were out trying to slow people down around the beach area according to the report during the Labor Day and during the Dirty Dancing event and all that.
Right.
And we've talked about that for a while, that Commissioner Cameron and I, a couple years ago, when we put these radar signs on Boykamp Road, we had talked about one there with the chief, as a matter of fact, if I recall. We discussed one coming this way around the beach house to slow people down, to catch their attention, to remind them at that last minute, and one going this way. We had also talked about two on that straightaway by the golf course and coming out that way, because we've had people stop there doing 67, 68 miles an hour in a 35. I mean, they really get lead-footed going down that descent. And coming down the hill from Ingalls, that slope down there into the sign. So, what I wanted, mentioning all that, I wanted to suggest to David at this point in time, and to you, Shannon, as the manager, that looking down the road at next year's budget and CIP, put five of those radar signs in the CIP or in the budget and planning for the Public Works Department to accommodate that. We completely forgot it this past year, and if we, I think with this lead, we might, between the three of us, we might remember it.
And one of those crosswalk signs are flashing that they use now like they've got in Ruth.
Yeah, the actual type, we can discuss whenever it comes to that time.
Are you talking about putting those along Memorial Highway?
Huh?
Are you talking about putting those lading signs along Memorial Highway?
Yes.
Right. We'd have to approve, we'd have to get DOT to approve this. Right, I understand that, but-
Well, the only thing I ask on this is keep it as much as you can down there. I mean, you go through Chimney Rock at 20 miles an hour, and then you're going to go all the way from Chimney Rock all the way to that end at 25 miles an hour. Those of us that drive that road eight, 10 times a day, every day, that's a long time to stay at 25 miles an hour.
I understand.
Around the beach, I have no issue. I've had this discussion. It's just, there's people that travel this road every day. And also, the other thing to look at is from this time of year until spring, where's the traffic?
Right.
So, I've got mixed feelings about it. We've had some discussions and debates, but that's the only problem I've got with is that now from this time of year until Memorial Day, there's nobody here, but we're going to be doing 20 and 25 miles an hour for however miles that is. That makes it a long day.
I understand completely.
So, that's why we do need a little discussion on it.
We'll submit this to the board's pleasure. We're ready to go when the board is.
Yeah, and that, everything that's in that letter can be tweaked, changed. That map can be fixed. That map is a quick fix. Anything we want to do, so.
Well, I'm all for safety and slowing around the beach. I'm fine with it. It's just want, these other areas, just make it tough on the local community. I mean, that's just, that 20 miles an hour getting into Chimney Rock, around Chimney Rock, just is a tough.
I take it we couldn't have a seasonal speed limit?
I don't know. Did we have any accidents there, Chief?
Did we have any accidents where we're looking at changing the speed limit?
The beach area?
No, it's already-
Already. They're from basically in front of the tennis courts up to the Chimney Rock.
I mean, I'm sure there has been over the years, but not substantial.
Yeah. What about from the, from the liquor store up to Harris Road, that section?
We, I know we've had some wrecks up through there, but once again, I mean, nothing outstanding of a wreck though.
Just bump up?
Yeah.
I don't mind discussion, and just maybe by the next council meeting, make a decision on it, but that's my only concerns, the off-season.
So, take this information and put it on next month's agenda?
Yes.
Third decision?
Yes.
I think it's great. I make a motion that we do that.
No second.
All right. You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There is none? Then I would say, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay? Thank you.
Now, do you know they make electric signs that you can actually adjust your speed limit on? I mean, so maybe seasonal, maybe something, an option we could do with electric LED speed limit signs?
Well, we've already had the motion, but would there be a reason to ask Brad to check with the state to see what our options might be there?
As far as those types of signs?
Seasonal, or seasonal, a sign where you could change the speed limit?
I think that's a great one.
It's, yeah, I mean, it's like a good example. You know, the whole thing is based, as I understand it, they are requiring that the governing body adopt the speed limit along with their recommendations as well. So, I mean, you can craft anything into the ordinance, so if that, that could very well be an option. I'm not familiar with it, but I can always talk to Ms. Anderson and get some input on that.
Okay.
I'll be prepared to speak to that at the next meeting. How about that?
Shannon?
Sure. Next item is more spark traffic flow. There was a request for Police Department to take a look at that and review that, and our chief has done some. I think he has maybe a handout or two for us as well.
Chief. Thank you, sir.
I can look on.
All right. Oh. Yeah. Oh, without lift. Oh. It's complete options.
Yeah. Options. Thank you, Chief.
You say it.
Oh, thank you.
From our standpoint, I don't think it's a bad idea. As far as safety, like you was asking before, we've never had a, you know, I can't recall an actual wreck over there. Maybe a bump up or something like that, but we've never had anything with any kind of injury or anything like that. But, you know, from a common sense standpoint, it does make sense to, you know, maybe make it one-way over. What I did to the mouth here is, you know, from my judgment, I think that would be the best way to do a one-way over there. The reason for two options, one with the cut-through, one without. Spoke to some people involved. I spoke to Sonia over at Marina Tours. She suggested without the cut-through. She said that would open up more parking spaces, and from her viewpoint over there, she thinks it would cut down even more on confusion to eliminate the cut-through. I spoke to Dean Givens and David Erwood, their opinion on it. They said they think it would work without the cut-through, but they would suggest keeping the cut-through basically for boat traffic. As you pull a boat around there, it's a lot easier to get through if you pull straight through the cut-through in their minds, as well as if boat traffic backs up there, they've got an option just to swing on around, come back through and wait. I brought up both situations for y'all to look at and make a decision on.
Yeah, what the Parks and Rec Board had recommended was basically, they had talked about without the cut-through but wanted to get other opinions, and the majority of opinions, and Sonia, of course, said yes, they felt it without. But it was to keep the same direction for boats as it is now and go the whole opposite direction as opposed to what you're showing.
Right.
So, my question is, is at the very end down there by the Port of Johns and so on, does a, if there's two vehicles parked in those last spots, and the area in between, is there room for a- And, and the area in between, is there room for a vehicle with a boat trailer to make that turn?
Coming from the opposite direction of.
Yeah, well, coming back up, the way you've got it here. Is there room for a vehicle to do that?
I would say Dean, he drives, takes the boat around.
But it'd be tight.
How about going the other way? The way they would, you know, go now. If they come in and follow the arrow and now as it is down to this point, instead of turning to come in and launch their boat, they go straight down and come around the other way, is it a little better?
Yeah, if they're, if they're on the lake side of the road going toward Morris Park, that's an easier turn than the other side.
Right.
Than coming in from the field side and turning that.
Yeah. Because the current, the current arrow comes, as you come off the highway, you go to the right of the ATM. And then you make the turn and come and back in and launch your boat. That's the way it's been done. And then, what the Parks and Wreck Board was looking at continuing that one-way around this way. The other thing here too is, is going in these directions, people would not be able to turn in by the ATM. They'd have to make an awkward, you know, if they try to sit in their vehicle and use the ATM, which it's designed for.
Right.
They're going to have to make an awkward approach to it to get there. Because going this way, they wouldn't be able to do that. Going that way, they could.
Right.
I don't know, just a thought.
I thought of this way, just basically keep a, a flow to it. If you come around and you can just drop off right there at the Tours building and then cut down for the boats and then the other traffic that doesn't need the boats, just continue to proceed on, pass the boat area there. Per suggestion from Dean and Dave Erwood, we've got the signs up, "Boat trailer traffic only." So anybody coming around that sees them signs, if they've got boat that they need to launch, then they can pull them down in there. Anybody else continues to flow through. And like I said, just from my viewpoint, and I didn't know the suggestion that Mr. Weber had brought up by the board, but looking at it from my viewpoint, make a complete do-not-enter right there at the ATM on the Memorial Highway side. Maybe even some markings on the road so they go past that and it's just a complete flow around through the opposite side, back down by the Tours.
Just a question.
It's whatever, you know, whatever y'all think's best.
Just a question, Sean, and Dean, and the drawings of the new, expanded Marina, we get to that point, what would work? This would be changed totally?
Yes, sir.
Right.
It would be a complete.
Up here.
Yeah.
And, and that's why, the, the board also recommended if we did anything, do it at minimal cost. Simply put some more arrows on the ground directing the traffic since that Marina plan is out there, so. And, and as far as closing the cut-through, all we're going to do is, like I guess Sonia suggested, we just put some planters or something there to block.
I talked to David, she just said that she thought it'd be best to eliminate that based on confusion. I showed her this map as well, what my idea was, and she thought that was great, but she just didn't like, you know, the cut-through staying in there. I first, when I first presented to her, had the cut-through there. And she just says, suggested doing away with that. David said it would be something that they could easily do.
We can, we can do it either way, whichever way they decide. My only thoughts of leaving the cut-through there is if you've got trucks with trailers with boats that are making that loop all the way down, and there, there's already somebody loading or unloading the boat, and you've got a couple boats and trailers tied up there, then anybody going around is going to have to wait in that line to be able to come out of there.
Right.
Or if they had to cut-through, they can still make the cut-through and exit out of that area. So that, that was my recommendation for leaving the cut-through as it is. But I'm willing to do it either way, with or without, whatever y'all say.
May I suggest that, that, and maybe even make the motion that we, that I take this back to the Parks and Recreation Board for October and let them discuss it again and looking at both possibilities that you have here and see where they want to go with it.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? If there's none, all those in favor say aye. All the same sign.
Both of those will come back next month.
Thank you, Chief.
Stephen, you want these to take to the?
Sure, yeah. That would help. Thank you very much.
You have to make more?
Thank you, yeah, that'll save some money for reproduction costs. Chief, while you were there, I wanted to offer my congratulations to your department and also to Corporal Collins and Sergeant Uplit. If folks don't know, on September the 4th, they ended up in a chase that led into Polk County and ended up with a double arrest of some felons that were wanted elsewhere. And one had several warrants against them. So, thank you. Doing a great job.
Appreciate your recognition.
Thank you, Chief. Next item, we just want to report and perhaps have a discussion with council about is our commercial center. That's where we're looking to move the new ABC store. ABC, I think it was asked last time how the ABC board felt about it. They're moving forward and so we're making progress there. We've activated the steering committee again. With my new roles, this is something we've kind of held off on for a while. But steering committee's been activated. We have the architects who have submitted a floor plan. Nayvotum has looked at the site, as I reported last month, and they've looked at some stormwater issues. I have a plan for that. And so we are moving forward with the design. And I did receive an email today right before this meeting from the architects. And so they're, they're putting finishing touches on, on the floor plan. Next, the steering committee will take a look at floor plan and the elevations and then we'll have a set of documents then that we can actually work into a bid packet. We're trying to sync that project up with the renovation of the Welcome Center so that we can perhaps give incentives or incentive some folks to bid on these, these two projects at the same time. So we're continuing to move forward with that and be glad to answer any questions if the board has any mayors on that steering committee.
Shannon, you might want to comment. We also have the construction contractor working with us on this. And so, once these plans are, in a sense finalized, at least to the point where we, we would then cut them loose to do a detailed cost estimate. So, we're not surprised at the bidding.
That's right.
And, and if there is any value engineering, further value engineering on it, that, that would be the time when that gets done, right?
That's right. And also just to add, if you were wondering, that is a separate small contract we had with this particular commercial contractor so that when we get to the end, because they have had that contract, they'll be free to bid on this project as well. So that's the way we chose to do that. So they're helping us be realistic with the numbers, but when they finish their job, their task, then they will be allowed to bid as well.
And did you say our goal is to try to get them, get the ABC move like late, late fall, early, after the first of the year, in that window?
First of the year.
After the first of the year when business is low ebb.
That's right. And before the, before the new season. So that's what, that's what we're shooting for. Next item is assisted.
Shannon?
Yes?
Just make a quick comment on, on the ABC store. I'm the liaison to the ABC board. I came in after the decision was made to make the move. I just want to let everybody know and say it publicly that there's been pushback on, from the staff at the ABC store about why we have to move and so, and from the board initially. And so, when I came, became the liaison, I, I, they felt like they'd not been heard. So I asked them to put together their business plan from the town's perspective as to why they would be better off to stay where they were from a financial interest to the town rather than moving. And after they sat down to figure that out, they figured out that they didn't want to present something because they realized that from, from the town's benefit, the town's going to own both the buildings and it's, it's, which can be the best use for the current location and which can be the best use for the location up the street. And so, you know, obviously, it's a much more valuable piece of property where the ABC store is now. There's other uses. We have, we don't have any intention to sell that property, but be leased to someone else that'd be willing to pay more money for that, which is income to the town. And the ABC store, all the, all the proceeds from the ABC store come back to the town anyways, whether it's in the form of the rent or whether it's in the form of profit they make. All the, all the profit, all the money that's made at the ABC store comes back to the town. So, that's been a pushback, but we're working through that and, and we see a, a good reception. Sean, anything you add to that?
No, I think that's, I think that's good. And also Commissioner Kilby's on that steering committee too. I didn't recognize it earlier, but he is. We've, we've got much better communication now between the board, council and staff and the architects, so good communication. Next item, we just want to touch on another mayor. We probably want to comment on this. He was involved in this work early on for almost two years before he was, was the mayor. But the assisted living facility, Buffalo Creek Road has started back again. And so they've been on site, they've tested well for water, they've contacted the town about sewer. We have the capacity to supply that facility with sewer. So, that is moving forward. They've actually asked the county to pass a resolution to facilitate raising of funds for that facility and another facility that will be in Bostick, the same county. It is a 62-bed facility. Mayors, or anything else we'd like to add or just announce?
I would just, it's been a long slog to get to where we are now. And we thought that this facility was going to be breaking ground at least two years ago. And then this water issue developed with the local utility over there, the Carolina Water System. So apparently, that's all, that's what Shannon's reporting been worked out. And we don't yet know what, what their target date is for opening that facility. I think that's what a lot of people would like to know. But it's nice to know that at least in the, in the not-so-distant future, it appears that we will have an alternative for folks that need that middle care regime, which is assisted living versus nursing, full skilled nursing care or memory care, or at the lower level, independent living. This is the slice, and it's a, I believe it's the first step in a long, in a wider plan by this assisted living senior care provider to develop other regimes of care at that facility or nearby. So, this would be 62 beds for those that would fit into that middle level of care. And it's something we've needed forever. And we've lost a lot of really good citizens from this community who have had to relocate as a result of themselves or their spouse needing that care and it just being logistically impossible for them to commute where the closest place. So anyway, I would add all that's a great thing. I think it's going to be, there are many ramifications from an economic development standpoint, I think, to that. The 35 jobs, mostly good-paying jobs in that facility. Town's going to realize, I'm sure, some fairly hefty sewer fees from an outside, that is not in the town, incidentally, that's in the county. So there'll be a out-of-town, commercial sewer customer, so. Anyway, that's all I have to add.
Last item that I had on the list was Boys Camp Road property. Dean, if I can get you to come. Well, Dean is, is coming forward. It's a project that we're looking to expand. The materials recovery site. Also, we're working with Chimney Rock Village regarding standards relative to their regulations. We have some floodplain issues that we're trying to work through, so we're working with brown engineering. And then also Brad is, is working as a consultant with Dean on it, since Brad is so well-versed in land use regulations. So, Dean's been working with the landscape architect. We've had a meeting. Dean, where are we?
We're waiting on the architect. We've had several meetings with him and we've showed him the plans of the Morris Park Plan. We've showed him the plan we had for, was it called Part of Plan? We showed him the different ones and we're asking him to design this to fit into the whole scope of things. Don't really have a lot of information at this point. It is in his hands and we're waiting to get some paperwork back from him.
I probably would add that one of the artful things we're trying to, to do is, I think we made the announcement earlier, but the town did receive the Part of Grant. Last council meeting, we reported it, it looked good. So we did receive the grant and, but the site plan that was submitted versus what we are trying to do now with the site, which is use it both as a materials recovery site as well as a public use, public access. We're trying to marry those two concepts together. And so that's why Dean is working with a landscape architect. So, goal is to keep both pots of money for Part of, as well as the money that we're using for dredging for that site. And we believe that, that we can pull that off. So we'll, we'll see where that goes. We'll see if we can do it, but that is our goal.
Right. So that's an active commitment with, that grant is ours and there's no issues to it. That'd be great because that was playing into what I was going to ask you about. As I saw on page four, where right now we have no grants in progress. And I was wondering about the boardwalk project. Glad you're up there because I see your hand working on the boardwalk.
Yes.
So my next question was, do, do we have engineering in place? Do we have a landscape architect or team going forward with that since it's been budgeted for?
For the Marina, that's another one of Dean's projects. Dean's busy.
We got a, we're going to have another meeting tomorrow. Right now, we're still working with the company to give us a, the framework of, of income, outgo, how much the project's going to cost. It's a feasibility study. And like I say, we have another meeting tomorrow afternoon with them. We've had multiple meetings with them and we keep feeding them information that they'll call and they'll ask about different aspects of the project. And we'll have to get them the numbers so they can plug these numbers in and give us a model. And see that it's going to be a feasible project or if we're going to have to change things.
This is including the boardwalk and the Marina expansion?
At this time, yes, sir.
It is.
Yes, sir. It was the, it was the, in the planning stage, it was phase one, which was the boardwalk and the Marina, and the Marina, the building and everything.
Right. Have we looked at any grants or anything that would be able to get any help on that project?
Not yet, not yet. But there possibly could, could be some available.
We're also doing a financial feasibility study, weren't we? Something to that effect regarding the Marina building?
This is included in that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. How much was the Part of Grant?
130. 130-something, 132?
I think, I think it's close.
So that's not even half of, of the cost?
That grant was specifically for property.
Right, right. Right, and, and the normal process, if you, if you used it all for park or planned it all for park, normally it's half of the purchase price of the property. Right. And, and 132 is not half.
I know.
That's only one piece of the property. That's, that includes the second piece. I thought we modified the grant request to include the second piece of property.
Ron was the one that worked on that. The exact number I don't have, but that was my understanding, that we did expand that to try to take advantage of what would be available for the second.
And you may correct me on the amount. I'm just kind of going by some pretty vague memory.
A half would have been 208 or something like that.
It would have been, yeah, yeah. But, but I still remember that number of 130.
Yeah, so the 130-something is only half of the first piece.
That's correct.
The first parcel.
That's correct.
So, we need to query the status of the second parcel. Is there actually an, an existing request for that? Because I thought they were, were combined and went in as a singular request.
We'll check. We haven't received the official letter back yet, but I got a phone call from, from Part of that, that basically said that we had secured grants.
And then we can only use that money if we develop it as a park.
That's right.
And recreation-type area.
That's right.
So if we use part of it for spores pit, then we can't use any of that money for spores. our spoils pit.
For that port.
We're trying to marry the, to get.
But we're using dredge funds.
But understand that we can use the dredge grant.
Right, exactly.
That's right.
Okay. All right.
And if we create a usable park space in Moore's Park, which is a goal.
Redevelopment.
Then we would qualify for a part of grant to develop the facilities on that land.
For redevelopment, that's correct.
Exactly, yeah. And we can use the dredging funds to, as I understand it, to remove the pits. So I think we're double-dipping here.
We're trying to, we're trying to double-dip. We're trying to do it as best we can.
I'm going to do the same thing, because since I got you both, got another question for you. The old floating docks, has there been any update on that? They're still sitting over here in the corners of the Marina's? Any decision made to get them where they're usable for our public?
No. I mean, they're here for your pleasure, to wherever you want them to go. We've talked about pieces of them probably coming back over to the Boys Camp property, not the whole piece, but at least enough to be used there. We've talked about them being back here in the river as a launch from this side of the land, but right now, we haven't dug in to say, okay, where do we want them to go? How big can, you know, because these things can be broke down in, I want to say 20-foot sections, you know, very easily. So, you know, it'd be up to.
Who's been tasked with following through on this?
Well, maybe this will help. As we do, as we do the design for this piece of property, we'll take a look at those to see if we can repurpose those and use them back over there where they are.
Yeah, I mean, it's a perfect opportunity both sides.
Probably should put them back out there during hurricane season. Probably want to get through this round before we make the decision. But the good thing is, they're out of the way, and they're not in anyone's way as far as vehicle traffic. And I even see people occasionally over there.
Been using them, yeah.
Yeah, using them.
Yeah, I understand a lot of folks like the one over here for fishing, or just pulling up there and getting on it and then diving off or jumping off.
I just don't want to forget them, I just want to use them.
Well, there's something, a 400-feet of dock out there, so I think we can kind of do several projects around the lake and stuff for the town that might be beneficial to several different.
And that's all I'm asking, is just stay on task.
The more we lean towards the pits over here, and doing away with these pits, then the more we need to lean towards moving that dock here to establish that launch point that's in the, that new Moore's Park Plan. And that's what had been discussed before when we purchased it. Now, I don't think we would fit the whole 400 feet here to establish that launch point, but probably half of it would be suitable. And we would have to modify that to some degree to make it a launch.
So to give a little bit of update on the process, once Dean has a draft for proposal for how we can use that site and then redevelop the military recovery site here in Moore's Park, then we're going to take that back to, run those through the boards, Parks and Rec, for them to look at, review, and give their input. And so that type of facility can be repurposed and placed wherever we need it. So it's, it's no rush to anchor those in a permanent place until we know where we're going with all of those plans.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that.
No problem.
And I just got one more for Shannon, and I'll leave him alone.
I have one more for Dean while he's there.
Go ahead, Dean.
Give him a shot.
Okay, well, mine's simple, we just have some people from Boys Camp, the Lakelure Villages Resort down here. Wanted to check to see what the staff's with our meeting with Duke Energy and Stephen Norris, where that stands, so to know, you know, was that concern about the power trees falling and all that?
Yeah.
Have we been able to set up anything with Duke to get the two in the same room?
I have one more for Dean, I got that. I've made contact with Duke Energy, and their representatives actually showed up today, but we were in an emergency meeting about this emergency hurricane situation. Mr. Norrie didn't show up today, and he's made contact, he's just replied to my email, and Duke Energy also agreed that they would come back after the storm, and everything is passed, and we will reassess that situation. But Duke Energy wanted you to know, they did show up today, and they're willing to work with us and seek out a solution, so.
And that's what we want, I mean, we just got a legitimate request and all. And Laura, you, you still have that truck that's a little Colorado, or that smaller fire truck back there?
Yes, do you want it?
No, that's what I was going to say, if you put it out for bid, or you're on that extra list, it's just been sitting for months.
Yeah, and we've been working on that process. I'm unfamiliar with the process of putting it on to bid, so we're trying to work that out.
Okay, I'll just see it sitting still and.
Yep, we're ready to go. It stuck off of our insurance, and it's.
It's stuck in the grass.
Yeah, I just, I appreciate, I just want to get that truck out of here.
Yeah. Dustin, PD has become an expert, I think, at surplus, moving property, so if you will get with Sean, and I think he has somebody that can probably help us with that, and I've already proved that twice. So I think, welcome to Sean, get that all the way.
I appreciate it.
We'll do it.
Thank you. I'm glad.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen, you had something?
Yeah, and I noticed on Dean's report, let me say, I have one more thing for Dean. The small pond repair bid we're receiving, Tim Edwards, was the lowest bidder. How many bids did we receive? Okay. What was the amount of the Tim Edwards bid?
His was like 17,000. The next bid was 21,500, I believe, and the next was like 24,000.
And we're still going to continue to start to work after the WEG games, okay?
Yes, sir.
Great, awesome. Everything going as planned there to fix that? Okay.
Shannon, before we get off your report, and I really don't see any other place in the agenda where we might could report this, but I think it might be timely, you know, to give just a quick overview of what we're doing in terms of hurricane preparation. We put out yesterday some information in a red alert and some other.
Sure.
Would you go over just what our process is, and what we're doing, and why?
Absolutely, and I'll start, and we have a number of folks in the room that can help us need that. So yesterday at 11 o'clock, we pulled together our emergency preparedness team, which is made up of the staff and the mayor. And so we're looking at tropical storm Florence, which has been upgraded to a hurricane. And so it looks like that hurricane is going to be hit landfall Friday at 8:00 in and around the Myrtle Beach area. And right now, the tone, the eye is to move, looks like it's coming our way, in the eye of the storm, Asheville. So that means that we have started, yesterday we started pulling the lake down a foot for 24 hours, and so today, we've made a decision to go ahead and start the process, pull it down.
People still evacuating from coastal parts of South Carolina.
Two feet per day, to see if we can build the extra capacity to absorb what we can. What's interesting about this storm is that it's going to be coming up the river, it looks like. So the place below us is going to be inundated and flooded before it actually rolls over Lake Lure. So we are trying to start releasing water for the sake of the folks below the dam, and also so that we can protect the dam. And so those are the two main reasons that we are starting to increase the rate of release over the dam. We are going to, Laura is currently working on communications so we can get this information out. We had members, today at 2:30, we had two members of emergency management with the county, working closely with us, so they can go back and report what actions we are taking. We are sensitive to the folks below the dam, and so we've made it very clear that we want to keep good communication with the county as we do what we need to do to protect our dam, but also we want to make sure that the folks below the dam are safe as they can be as well. So we're working two fronts here. It is something that we are having to make decisions on, on looks like a daily basis. And so we will meet every day, this group will convene at 2:30 every day, we'll look at the latest information, and then we'll try to make decisions real time, and then we will report those decisions back out through Facebook, our website, and also the other system that we have in place that actually lets folks know. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. But I would say this, one of the things that we learned today, we also are working with Dr. Dan Marks, who is a dam safety expert, and so he was conferenced in with us today. We may even have him come on-site later this week, if it looks like we need to do that. It may be that we find a place to put him up, to keep him here with us. He can run numbers real time to help us with how wide we need to open the gates, so and so forth. So we're taking every precaution we can, and moving diligently, and taking into consideration not only our needs, but the folks below the dam as well. So don't leave anything out. We have Dustin Whitcaster here with us, the mayor's been a part of that team, David Airwood, who oversees the dam operation, we had Donnie, our dam operator, in the room. Who did we leave out? And Dean Givens, who's our lake operations director. So we're all there, and we're all, we're all trying to make sure we stay on the same page. And like I said, day by day, we may need to take different kinds of action, and so this team will convene and try and move the ball forward. Mr. Mayor?
I would just say, you know, that discussion all focused on the management of the lake level, and that's right now, in advance of the storm, probably our most important preparation. But I did hear, during the, during the session today, a couple of the department heads, I think commented that there's many other areas of preparation ongoing. We anticipate the storm hitting over the weekend, and so that's a time when normally our staff is not in the town. I think all of the department heads are making arrangements to have their staff available to respond to the storm, and I know they're going through checklists to make sure the equipment is in workable condition and ready to go, that we have sufficient supplies available, whatever that is, you know, to sustain the effort to recover from the storm. And, you know, we made, we've made a really strong commitment, at least in this team, that we would do our best job of communicating what we're doing to the citizens and others that need to know on a real-time basis. I know that's an area that we, you know, during the tropical storm and looking back at it, we probably could have done a little bit better job of advanced notification as posted after the fact, kind of a reporting. So Laura is on board with us, and she's a part of our team, and so I anticipate. The other thing that we, you know, we did ask for today, one of the concerns around the lake is when we lower the lake at a rapid rate, at times that could lead to some, we call it landslides or shoreline slides. And so we're stepping up the level of withdrawal this evening overnight, and tomorrow afternoon, we're going to send some folks out in the boat, you know, to inspect the shoreline to see if there's any of this going on. But I would encourage the residents, particularly those that live around the lake, if you see a situation like that, we would appreciate it, you know, you're the eyes of, constantly of what's going on. You call us and let us know what you see. That would be very helpful. So I think that's all I had to add.
If the storm track continues on its current course, at what point do you anticipate declaring a state of emergency? To, for evacuation and considering those things?
I think our emergency.
That's one part of it.
Yeah, one of the requirements for declaring a state of emergency is that there's an imminent danger to life and property. The state of North Carolina's already declared a state of emergency. Federal disaster has already been declared and signed by the president, so FEMA is on hand with North Carolina Emergency Management and ready to go. Talking to the county EM today, the county's going to discuss tomorrow if they're going to declare a state of emergency. So that's kind of where we're at, is you don't want to overshoot it and declare it before you need it, but you don't, it's a, it's a fine dance between the timing of when you do that.
Certainly well in advance of the storm being arriving here, or an aftermath of the thing.
Right, so that's where we're at right now, and I think that tomorrow, those considerations will be in our meeting, as to when the timing of that.
Are we doing anything extra for the folks downriver from the dam, knowing that the storm is projected to come this way and inundate them with water prior to the water coming from the dam? And the reverse flow to.
David, do you want to speak to that issue?
I didn't hear you.
Are we doing anything extra for the folks downriver, regarding the folks downriver, knowing the storm is currently tracking to come upriver and inundate them with water prior to us opening the gates and letting all that water out on them?
So there's two things, we go to the mic, Dave. Communication is key, so we have members of the county emergency management with us today, and we emphasize to them what our concerns were, and we made decisions, including the folks below the dam. So there's a communication link there, but then David can talk about dam operations.
Yeah, that's one of the main reasons we're going to what we are now, as far as lowering the lake levels. The more capacity we can put in our watershed here, the slower we can release water downstream. And Dustin has been in conference ahead of time of what we're doing. If you release slower, you know, it's controlled, it's going to be a, if this turns, it comes the way they're talking, it's going to be a lot of water that'll have to be released, and we want to do that as easily for the people downstream as we possibly can.
I appreciate that, and I have to digress for a minute. I was informed that the FEMA request for tropical storm Alberto were denied to the state of North Carolina. Has there been any new information regarding that? Anybody?
It was denied, but the state of North Carolina has filed an appeal from the federal government, so we're waiting on that information.
Just a general thought for those who have neighbors and all, if you have a fixed dock, ensuring to get out there and loosen those ropes. I've only gotten two boats today hanging by ropes, because it's up here. So we've got, we've got that concern, if you have a fixed dock, you've got to get out there. If you have a floating dock, it's not an issue, but with fixed docks, I've already pulled two today that were sitting sideways, because front end is on here, so please help your neighbors out, especially on the lake front enders, if you would, let your, let your neighbors know, or check your neighbors.
Dean, we want to talk about that, maybe if you, David, something after, maybe after meeting, that could be something tomorrow that maybe you guys take a look at, see if you can look at. I just want to try to reemphasize, as far as lake operations go, it's really the first time I really had a chance to focus on it, given I had other duties with the town. But you start to understand that when you start to release more than what you normally release early, so you could build the capacity to absorb the amount of water that's going to come in, you're going to stretch out the time that you're releasing more than usual, versus all of a sudden you get hit, there's no storage capacity, you either overtop the dam, or you allow that wave of water to roll beyond the dam and below the dam. So what we're trying to do is not only protect that dam, but also help with the folks downstream. Again, the unusual part about this storm, if it follows the track that we looked at today, it's coming up through the watershed, and it's inundating the areas below the dam before it hits here, which means it's going to get. the areas below the dam before it hits here, which means it's going to get nasty below the dam, any way you look at it. So county, I know they're working on that to communicate below the dam what the situation is. And that's key for the folks below the dam. And we're doing everything we can to keep them in the loop, especially through Dustin.
I think everybody supports it. It's a good team. But please do look out for these people with fixed docks. Their summer hours are fighting from Charleston or somewhere. They can't get here. They're both hanging sideways right now.
And I think I read on one of the reports, Dave Lusk, are you putting together a volunteer group to help with cleanup efforts? There was something about that I saw. So for the benefit of the folks here that might not have known that, contact David Lusk if you'd love to assist in that effort.
Thank you. Okay. Well, thank you, Shannon. I just, I think that was a good report. All right. So now that brings us to, if we're done with the manager's communications with the council, liaison reports and comments. Anybody want to go first?
I'll go first.
Commissioner Cameron?
My committee's bi-monthly, so there's nothing to do with utilities board.
Go first. Who would like to go first?
I'm sure too. I could do my, the asset management board met and basically just going over the listed properties and making sure that we have a full title history and deed abstract on every one of them. It's kind of a boring process, but it's getting done. At the zoning and planning board, the discussion was about a lighting regulation ordinance and has to do with, the two concerns is, one is we want to preserve the dark sky as much as we can, but we don't want to over-regulate. And they're putting together a proposed regulation about the, for lighting. And the charge is to develop a regulation to restrict light pollution, controlling foot candles, specifying downlighting and maximum height for cutoffs and for directional parking and other light luminaries. So balance needs to be determined between public safety and illumination of business areas. So it's a process that's being walked through, and I'm sure they'll, along with Brad's help, will come up with something good.
I'll go next. From the ABC board standpoint, my comments I made are pretty much covers that. Not many changes or things to report there. Sales are good. We made money. If they're not, we didn't. So, you know, that's pretty much. But we are, as Shannon said, the steering committee's working hard on getting that on track so we can, and it's going to be a, really, when it's done, it's going to be really a nice upgraded story and with modernized, with shelving and everything. So that's going to be a good thing. As far as lake advisory, we just met yesterday because we didn't meet last week ago Monday because it was a little late. So we had a lot of different things that we discussed. We've not put together minutes from that meeting yet because Dean's been busy with other things today, obviously. We talked about some arrangements to lake use regulations. One of the things that we're really focusing on with LAB, as well as with council, is safety for non-motorized boating activities. We've got too many people out in the middle of the lake on kayak or stand-up paddleboard. And we've, Dean's been working on a nice brochure that we'll be using with all the rental places around. And Laura's been helping with that as well. But we're looking at stickers for people to be required to put on their non-motorized boats, the rentals, as well as personal or vacation rentals, so people understand what they're supposed to do and not supposed to do. And so that's a big issue that we're trying to address. Too many times I see somebody out in the middle of the lake, like I said, and it's scary. Or after dark, or, you know, you just never know. So working on that, Dean's working hard on the new trash bin with the thumb, but I say he's working hard on the river bin. And so we hope to get that. So that's pretty much it. Anything else, Dean?
That wraps it up. A couple of things was for later conversation.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, John. And Stephen?
The Parks and Recreation Board met on September the 6th. The newer maracord rep for the town was supposed to start yesterday. His name is Robin Schultz. So he will be at our October meeting to where the Parks and Rec Board will be able to meet him. This is his first experience with a maracord, and since he does not have prior experience, he may be eligible for a two-year position. If you recall, Trevor Freeman was the last maracord, and last month we recognized him on his departure. These folks do a great job for the town, for all the parks, and help with the maintenance of it, of them and so on. We talked about the counters out at Repatch Mountain and Buffalo Creek Park, and the figures are starting to show up. We've got new counters there. Those will be great tools in determining the number of visitors we have per year, which will help on determining needs. I understand that Mary Chakowski is going to be meeting with you or may already have, and regarding emergency management and stuff out of that area. I don't know when y'all plan the meeting, but that'll be probably delayed because of the storm, I'm sure. We're working on emergency closure signs or temporary closure signs as a result of tropical storm Alberto. Part of, a good part of Repatch Mountain was closed for a few days or even a couple of weeks. And now we're working on the signs that can be used in any park area for any type of emergency closure on a temporary basis. We're also working on the signs for the west end of Flying Bridge, a sign that they had worked on wanting a long time. And we finally ironed out the simple thing that a request was never submitted, and that has now been done. So they are going to get their sign. Had they only thought about that in the beginning. The Flying Bridge also mentioned they had received two grants from the TDA that would be used towards the kiosk that's being built there. Dale Minnick requested money because he's going to be bringing in some new trees this fall, and he wanted $500, I guess, to buy the trees or to bring them in. Is that correct, Dale? Thereabouts. Okay. $499. Okay. And of course, Melody Potter mentioned the fact that Carl Landrum was hired and will now be working with her in Andy's old place. And Andy is now working at the Public Works Department. The board is, about a year or so back, there was work on a commercial ordinance or an ordinance on what commercial activities should be allowed in the parks. That was never completed. We got them to revive that discussion, and they're going to be working on that to come to the manager with. And that's basically it for Parks and Recreation. As far as the Board of Adjustment, Lake Structural Appeals Board, they did not meet. There were no cases to be heard. That's all of my report.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, we did not announce, and I think everyone has seen the signs, but we're way finding signs. They're up, and so they look good. It's been something, it's been in the works for a long time. And a lot of people helped get us there. So those are good.
We need to do some trimming. All right. Well, that brings us to item number six, which is the section of the meeting we allow public comment, open comment from the public. I see one hand up there from someone I know. Would you like to make a comment? If you would, please come forward, if you would. And to the mic and identify yourself, Pat, and let us know where you live.
Okay. My name is Pat Cook. I live at 163 Seabish Way in Lake Lorik. My comment is about the wayfaring signs. We worked many years, very hard, fought for those signs. There's one of them that I'm very disappointed about. And that's in front of the tennis courts. It's between those crepe myrtle trees. It's lost. I mean, you get past it before you realize that sign is there. Now, I don't really see the crepe myrtle trees go anywhere because I love them. But I think that sign needs to be considered moved. It might be cheaper to trim the trees, but I think that's in a bad place. So that's my comment. Get on it.
Thank you, Patty. All right. There weren't any other folks signed up, but as we always do, we have a little time if somebody else wants to make a comment. If not, yes, ma'am, would you like to come forward and make this comment?
I was just wondering what Mr. Lusk is following, if we did want to help, but you kind of left that out there, that we, how we would contact him.
Well, he's sitting right there, perhaps.
Normally what happens is Dean calls me and tells me what happened. So we give online and you get ahold of Dean. He'll schedule it because it might be so many things that settle at once instead of just going out and coming back in, going out and coming back in.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Is that, okay, fine. All right, good. Well, if there's no other comment, then we'll go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. And we remove one item for, under the new business, the rest, there were four items there dealing with approval of former council, town council minutes, resolution intend to reimburse a police vehicle and boat, that just simply enabling us to go ahead and purchase those vehicles. While interest rates are lower now, they'd be debt financed, there's approval of budget amendment relating to the Green Line project. There's a small balance due that was not included in the grant, I understand, relating to engineering fees that has to be moved over in our budget. And then there's this sludge hauling project. This involves replacing the current, I would refer to as dysfunctional method in which we deal with our sludge and dispose of it with a more cost-effective called GeoTubes. And this deals with the budget amendment to allow for the purchase and installation of those GeoTubes. So those are the four things on the consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion that we approve the consent agenda as amended at the beginning of the meeting.
Very good. We have a motion, a second, by Commissioner Cameron. All right. Any other discussion on that? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those in favor, same sign. All right. We apparently have no unfinished business. We did a good job last time finishing. And that brings us to the final section here, which is new business. And we have a number of different items under new business. The first one, A, being budget ordinance 180911A, which is to amend the Green Line project. And let's get over there so I can start going through there now. Is that, there's an ordinance here. Is that Sam? I don't see a back sheet. Is that something, we need an explanation on Sam?
I don't really think we do need an explanation.
Nope. Just a simple ordinance that allows.
And I make a motion that we approve budget ordinance 18-09-11A to amend the Green Line project as presented.
All right. We have a motion, a second?
A second.
Second. All right. Any discussion on that? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That gets into new business B, which is a budget ordinance 180911B to establish a low-pressure sewer system project. This is another one of these ordinances that I assume needs no explanation, or does it?
I don't think it needs an explanation, except to the public, the total cost on this, on this sewer project, on this project ordinance is $12,831,866. So to make you aware, we're looking at building a low-pressure forced main sewer system adjacent to the perimeter of the lake. And we would be abandoning the sewer system in the bottom of the lake. So just to let the public know what's involved there.
And that is actually the, that is the balance that's available under the Clean Water State revolving fund loan that we receive for the Green Line project that the state has now agreed to transfer over to the low-pressure sewer and sewage treatment plant.
Based on all that, I make a motion that ordinance number 18-09-11B, capital project ordinance of the town of Lake Lorik, town council, be approved.
Okay. Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second, Bill.
Second that. And Commissioner Kilby, any further discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Brings us to item C, under new business, which is golf course, equipment repair, purchase approval.
Come on, Dave. Good evening.
Questions, or should I?
Why don't you just give a little background of what it is you're needing here and why, I guess, is that?
What I'm looking at is a reimbursement for some parts costs to repair some of the equipment at the golf course, which a lot of it is very old. The only reason that I'm asking is, it's been a slow year between the weather and the troubles that caused on the greens and such. They are already paid. We've already paid them. I'm just looking for help. Also, I don't know, is the tree included in there or not?
No.
No.
You're talking about removal of tree here, the other one, the Parks and Rec was purchased, I guess, to buy a replacement for the one you want to cut down?
Yeah, that area, yeah. It's already gone, yeah. What I've done is, I've turned in the invoices for the parts only. Either I put them on, or I have a mechanic that comes and does it for me if it's something that I can't handle.
When I first got elected, I went out and talked to you and talked to you about maintenance of your equipment and so on. And you says, well, this is the town's equipment. I said, oh, really? You don't own it. The town does, and you repaired it. And I found then that under your contract, you're supposed to do the repairs to the town equipment. And that didn't really make a lot of sense to me at that time, but it is the agreement you went and been to. And the agreement expires next April, March or April?
Correct.
And so you've been paying the repairs on this equipment without your contract?
Yes.
And had no issues? Are there additional reasons why this year there might be more of the hardship and the need for reimbursement as opposed to previous years?
Lack of play, which means lower revenue. And some of the parts that we've replaced are more expensive than the usual, just expendable things. There was one year where we did have a 35-horse diesel engine rebuilt. We ate that expense at $2,500. Like I mentioned, I'm just asking for help. The bills are paid. If it can't be done, I understand.
So you're asking right now for additional reimbursement of $3,017.19, and you've already received $2,346.04 for repairs as reimbursement for other stuff?
Yes. That first number was from before this existing budget, over expenses that we incurred before July 1st. July 1st.
And under repairs and buildings, we budget $5,000 for a year, correct, Ram?
Correct.
And so this will cause us to overspend that line for the year, and we've got 10 months left in the fiscal year.
Early in the budget process for this year, I did request that the subsidy for the golf course be $90,000 for the year. The last three years of our existing lease were not committed to as a number. We didn't really have any discussion anywhere, and it was put in at 80 again.
Okay.
That's part of my anticipation of things that were going to happen as comes up with the age of the equipment.
And your total lease or contract was for, what, five years?
This one was five years, yes.
And the initial amount of agreement was $75,000?
For the first two years, yes.
And the year before last, the year before last, which would have been the third year, without discussion, the council increased it around $5,000, just on a whim. And it's my part because I suggested it, and we left it at that. So even with that $5,000 increase in the contract amount, you still need the extra reimbursement.
Okay.
Half of us are asking for it. Yes, it's half of us for the. Yeah, half of us for the one tree we removed. That's a big tree.
Yeah, that was a big tree.
Yeah.
That's not within you. Tree disease, they also, it looked to me like, once we got to looking at it, we knew the guy that took it out, there was rot inside there, and the way that the growth structure was on it, each one of those could have gone like a pickup sticks.
Right.
And the scariest part was I was mowing right in that area an hour before where that one fell. Luckily, it didn't go in the road too. The angle was just right.
Does the contract say anything about tree removals or tree maintenance as part of the requirements?
No, I don't believe there's anything specific in there.
But it does say that you will maintain the equipment.
Yes.
Whether that's right or wrong, that's what it said.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I have no problem awarding the additional $1,500 for the tree removal, but I'm waffling a little bit on the repairs based on the fact that we'd already increased the stipend $5,000, and you've already received other reimbursements of $2,346. So I'm waffling on that other $1,500 there.
We anticipated way back when we originally did the contract that the expense would grow up because either the equipment would, you know, would go through its normal life cycle. So I'm leaning toward thinking that we should reimburse the full amount. Because we knew that it was going to continue, it was just that we didn't, we thought, we left ourselves open so that we could look at it when the day came, and then now the day's here, and we've, I think it's a reasonable request.
Of course, that would necessitate budget amendments for anything else that might come up in the rest of the year, when you've got eight, nine to 10 months to go of it.
Yeah.
As long as we're prepared for that.
What do you think?
Well, I think in the memorandum to council from Sam, our finance director, in Dale's defense, over the last six years, he's said some is paying us on equipment replacements, labor and course improvements. The last two years have been a struggle with lack of irrigation. When the lake is lowered and he can't pump and play, and that's certainly not Dale's, you know, fault that those happened. So I'm leaning toward the full reimbursement myself based on slow play and not having. Let me ask this question to Dale, that the condition under greens is that, will they come back or?
Yes. We took delivery of the air fire today. It appears to me that my pre-emergent is done keeping the ground grass and goose grass out of them, so that means I'll be able to start seeding, and we are going into better weather. There has been some slight creep of the existing grass, which the good grass is good. It's just a matter of getting in those areas and getting new seed down, get them aerified, top pressed, all the things that would be normally done at this time of year.
Okay.
What do you think?
And I know what he's fighting there because town spent $350,000 in irrigation and greens, and he got defeated. They put no drainage on the greens, they put no proper procedures for the preparation of the greens before they're put down. And so I know he's fighting it every day, and it's not his fault. This was because course doctors at the original job did not do it correctly. And I've actually personally worked for two golf courses doing some of that work. So he's paying every day extra money for doing that, so I don't have any problem with it.
I'll make a motion then that we reimburse the $3,017.19.
A second. The motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
Well, the other discussion that has occurred is convinced me, and yes, I'll vote for it.
All right. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you for your continued support. We thank you for your hard work and a good hard job.
Struggle, thank you. Okay, that brings us to item D, which is the Schnabel Engineering Contract Approval. I guess that is really my item. I entertained support from our interim town manager because he's been very involved with me on this. But to explain, we have been, over the past month or so, we have been attempting to formulate a new form of agreement. The town has not, as far as I can tell, had a similar professional service agreement, which I refer to as a task ordering type agreement, which is to say, as a project would proceed, it gives us the flexibility in steps or stages or phases to authorize work under a general project format. And then as we get into the authorization of work, as we know more about the project and can be more specific about what the scope would entail, and therefore what the budget requirement would be and the schedule for that work as a project proceeds, I found in my past this to be a very effective way to perform major infrastructure projects. And so that's the form of agreement that we have now created with Schnabel, who are dam consultants. They're the professional firm that we hired, we selected to take that project forward. And in the packet there, I've given you guys a copy of what is a, I believe it's a five-page agreement. The agreement simply stipulates the basic terms and conditions under which all work that would be performed under a given task order, which would be added to this agreement as an addendum, will be done. So this is the uniform or master agreement or general terms and conditions. And it includes, among other things, requirements for them to carry insurance liability, errors and omissions liability, general liability insurance in the event that's needed on a project. In each case, there is a limit of liability, which is common in contracts like this, and that limit of liability we've made sure ties to the maximum coverage that's available from this firm's insurance policies. And so I would ask, first of all, that the council consider by motion approving, adopting this first master agreement. And if that's done, then I'll move on to another item under this, which would be the first task order addendum.
Okay. So you want us to approve this memorandum first or?
TSA.
The PSA first.
Oh, okay. Which is the one in our agenda.
It is, yes.
Okay.
Once we do that, I make a motion that we approve this Schnabel Engineering Contract. Okay? The professional service agreement. Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
I have a second.
Second by Commissioner Kilby. Do you have any further questions or discussion? If not, then I would say, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay, now we move on to the more complex part of this, and I hope to have this first task order addendum done a week or so ago, but as it turns out, it is an extensive piece of work that's necessary, and we have spent a considerable amount of time, I would say, negotiating or discussing this first task order addendum with Schnabel's representatives. And what I've provided to you as a sort of an addendum to the board package is the proposed scope of the first task order addendum, which identifies and describes six specific tasks that would be performed by Schnabel. And as you'll see in the schedule, these tasks would be performed between now, if we authorize this, and the end of the year. I think one may get into the first couple of weeks of January, but there are state-mandated deadlines that affect a couple of the deliverables here for these tasks that we are obligated to meet, or else, I suppose. And so I've asked them to structure their work plan around that. The tasks, tasks, as you'll see in this include, the general meetings and coordination decided in this block of work that we would have Schnabel show up regularly and report their progress and what they've accomplished and their deliverables as they've created before us. And then just in general, to be sort of our representatives going forward with the state NCDQ Dam Safety Office. I think they have an outstanding relationship that will benefit us in terms of regulatory cooperation. And I think that's a part of this first task. Then we have one for just generally reviewing information. Very specifically, this, what we initially, and they've done some of this already, was reviewing all of Dr. Marx's past work, which was important to us, you know, sort of as a second quality assurance check on the work that's been done. And in addition, now, Dr. Marx is working on a couple of significant deliverables relating to the dam. We authorized that a month or so ago. An H&amp;H hydrology and hydraulics model study for the dam. And then in addition, an emergency action plan we wish we had right now, but we will have in the future. And again, those are two things that the state Dam Safety Office require us to have ready initially by August the 1st. Obviously, we're well beyond that date, but Dr. Marx is about to deliver it. And what's important here is that a lot of what Schnabel will do, engineering design-wise, depends on what the outcome of this hydraulic and hydrology model. And so they need to be very comfortable with what's been done, and part of this task is to do that, is to give it a thorough review, make sure that he's included everything that they should have in there that they're going to need before it's ever submitted to the state. So then there's a whole series of field investigations involved in task three. There's a survey that has to be done, and you would think, well, you know, don't you think the dam would have been surveyed by now? And yeah, and there's been survey work done up there, but not nearly to the extent that is necessary for them to do design. The actual geometry of the dam needs to be surveyed because the original design plans, in many cases, did not have detailed dimensions on them. Plans we found do not. Some dimensions, but not nearly to the extent these guys need, I say Schnabel, needs to have that information in order to model, structurally model the facility. So they're going to do some remote sensing called radar, RIDAR, work on the dam to confirm the geometry. They're going to do some bathymetric surveys on the front side and the backside in the receiving stream to confirm what the lake bottom looks like right at the base of the dam, and then for some area before the dam. And then on the backside, in particular concern of ours is what the, what obstructions there may be in the receiving stream that are causing some water backup, actually, on the backside of the dam. So they're going to do all that in there. They use a subconsultant, Ed Holmes and Associates, that has these particular survey technologies associated with that. Then the second big part of that task is the state is requiring us to do by the end of the year, an underwater investigation of the wet side of the front side of the dam that has not been done. And so they are going to be contracting with this underwater construction corporation out of Tennessee that specializes in this type of inspection. They use underwater diving and submersibles. They're going to film the entire front side of the dam while Schnabel's engineers are up in the dry zone and looking at the films to determine if they see any anomalies or areas that we need to address in terms of the remediation program. That's a very ambitious inspection, and it's expensive. And then they're going to do their own inspection of the dam. Obviously, Dr. Marx did that. They're going to use some drones or UAVs on the far side of the dam that you really can't get to because you've got to cross the river, there's no access. And so they're going to do a very thorough visual examination of the various leaks and cracks and crevices and things that are causing concern, and they're going to record those so they have them documented. So they're going to do geologic mapping. It's important to understand what the underlying rock formations are. And the nice thing about the geology around the dam is that it's visible from the surface. And so they're going to be examining the particular deposits that are there that'll help them understand a little bit better what's going on underneath the dam where there's some seepage coming out, and so geologic. And then the major task here is a state mandated. They call it a finite element modeling exercise where they create in a computer a virtual 3D model, very detailed. This is where they need the dimensional information, information about the condition of the concrete, information about the geometry of the arches and so forth. They're going to do a finite element modeling exercise and subject the dam to various high failure conditions, for example, a seismic event or an overtopping event of the dam. And so from that, then they'll be able to understand what the dam's performance would be under these conditions and what, if any, additional reinforcing modifications, renovation need to be done. They'll do a scour analysis, which is something, if the water in the lake overtops the dam, on the backside of the dam, when it falls 100 feet, even though there's rock back there, there is a potential for erosion. They call it scouring as a result of that type of flow. And that could do some serious damage to the structural stability of the dam. They're going to do a scouring analysis back there and determine what would happen if our dam overtops, what kind of damage might be done. And then we've asked them to do what we call a tail race and outlet channel assessment and modification because there's some backing up of water behind the dam that is interfering with power generation. And we're trying to maximize our power generation. And so they're going to take a look at that and recommend how to fix that. And finally, they're going to bundle all this up into a documented report, you know, that becomes sort of historical compilation of all this information. And so I read all that, I tell you all that because I would refer to this first task order as a whopper. And I say that because of the fee associated with doing all this work. And so we received detailed accounting by. And so we received a detailed accounting by task of what the, each of these tasks are estimated to cost, and it adds up to $394,200. And because of the size of this fee, or actually for any fee of this nature, I asked them to prepare a detailed breakdown of how they come up with that fee. And so they have provided me with a very detailed master spreadsheet that shows every single task, every single position that will work on it, the number of man-hours that they believe it's going to take to do what those folks need to do. And then if there are any direct costs, like sub consultants, what are those costs and how much are they? I've gone through it in detail. I would say based on my, my background and having actually prepared a lot of these estimates, I think what they've proposed is entirely justified. The fees are appropriate. Their billing rates, which they've provided to us with the various professional grade and I think are appropriate, they're within a range that I am used to seeing. And so I have no, I would love to be able to have negotiated more with them on this, but in fairness, I believe their fees were reasonable and appropriate. Other than a markup on administrative expenses, which was reduced from 15% to 10%, they did that without me asking. I had no other adjustment to negotiate with them. And so, and so that's what I've, you know, bringing forward tonight. It was a detailed schedule of how they're going to perform all this work. I've included in the package. And I guess ordinarily, I would not bring an item of this magnitude before the board. We didn't have much more time to review all this and ask questions, but I am bringing it here tonight, asking if you feel it's appropriate to approve this task order. The only thing I would add is, if we don't do it tonight, and I would recommend we do it in the near future at a special meeting, not late a month, because we really can't afford to delay their start of work that they won't finish by the end of the year.
I have a lot of confidence in what you've done in your analysis. And it looks like for the amount of work we've done, you have here, and I'm, from a very non-engineering background, it looks like they are doing an awful lot for $394,000. So, yeah, I think ordinarily, would, you know, you'd like more time to discuss and adjust this sort of thing, but we just really don't have that time now. The state makes some reports and this is what we need to do to get them done. The secondary firm has been researched and vetted and I think we should go forward with it.
I, on the last page, I saw the pen and ink changes, which are the reductions in 15%. Two of them are very clear as 10, one of them looks like 19. So the other thing is, is you have pen and ink changes to an official document and those pen and ink changes haven't been initialed by the key parties, so that concerns me. The other thing, there's one other page where there was a handwritten change and it's not even, it's not legible to me, so I'm wondering what it says, marked out lump sum.
It says time charge. And actually, that was, when I negotiated with them on this, I wanted to them to consider doing this on a time charge basis, but having gone over in detail the budget that they've got for that, I would say it would be in our best interest to leave it as a lump sum.
So these pen and ink were your thoughts?
They were, they were. So just comments. I have a clean.
But they agreed with the percentage on the last part?
They did, they did. And they agreed that they would just simply reissue this page to us with the 10% on it. We'll just use that on the record, record agreement. Or have them initial every page when we're done. But that'll be, rather than have this kind of thing on there, there'll just be a new page with that.
Okay, and what is that number, the top one?
10, everything is 10.
It's all 10.
Yeah, it's all 10. Uniformly 10.
Yeah, it looked like a 9, so.
19, right. Well, that's my script.
Well, my comments I would add was, would be that North Carolina doesn't have an engineering degree to read this, this stuff for a month. And I would normally do probably when I started. So I'm going to defer to your experience and to, you know, whether I could question any of that, but I've got enough confidence in you. If you think that it's a good thing, then I'm, I'm satisfied with it.
Anything else you want to question?
Well, this memorandum for Sam is a budget amendment. Was that one of the ones on our consent agenda, Sam, or is this a different one? So we need to make a motion to approve the budget amendment. We need to make a motion to approve the task order number one as presented. And we've already made the motion to approve the PSA, personal services. Okay, that's great. You're going to do, you're going to do that one? Do it, just do them all. Okay. I make a motion that we approve the Schnabel Engineering Task Order Number One, dated September 5th, 2018, with the amendments as discussed.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Moore. Any further discussion there being none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
I make a motion that we approve budget amendment number 233 Schnabel Engineering Fees, dated September 7th, 2018, as presented from our finance director.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I second that.
Second by Commissioner Kilby. Any discussion on that? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. I would also point out something I asked Schnabel for and received a proposed projection of their billings for this project over the next five months. And Sam had that, and as we looked at how we would pay for this, you know, I think we, we have funds that we can, right, Sam? That we can allocate in each, each month at different sources and we'll modify this maybe to show what those are, so, yeah. Okay.
I do have one, one question, and I'm not sure who it needs to be for, but under the first one that we voted on under the insurance, I had written a note, the town would be listed as disinsured from Schnabel and their insurance policies. My question would be, I don't know if it's to William or who it needs to be to, is does the town, because of the scope of this, the size of these contracts with the dam and with the sewer, is there a need to get with the league or someone to consider if we need to raise our liability limits on our insurance policies during this, this construction period?
I don't know what the current limits are, but it's certainly worthwhile to take a look at that.
Like I said, we're setting ourselves on the hook for lots of money here and I don't, Sam, you have an opinion about that? Is there someone specifically at the league that you deal with on insurance? Would you, maybe we could, as a board, ask Sam to check into that?
You can, yeah.
And see and maybe, I don't know what our current limits are. $2 million? That's, that's why I think, even though we'd be listed as disinsured on theirs, and they have a million each of cuts and a 300, $3 million aggregate from Schnabel, I think, I think we should consider that. At least get the figures and ask, maybe we're going to have someone there at the, at the league that's an insurance specialist that can say, yeah, that's probably something you need to do and you should be okay. So I would suggest that we check on that.
William, is there anything about North Carolina law comes into play here where in terms of the amount of these limits?
I bet it is.
That would apply in this situation?
What's that?
The fact, what you're talking about is there's a limit is what we can be sued for, is what.
Is there statutory limit of liability for the town?
Anything is Schnabel's over? I mean, depending on the type of damage, you know, that might occur, there's probably government immunity to the, to the town.
Well, that may, that.
Not to lay it up to the amount of the insurance you have, but this amount.
That's right. So Sam may find out, as I said, that we don't need to worry about it. Whatever you've got sufficient because of government immunity. So, but let's make sure in this situation with this big projects that we're actually, you know, on the hook for all the money, but that's the case. Unless you satisfy us, we don't need to worry about it.
It's worth having the conversation.
All right, that's right.
Very good. Anything else on that before we move, move on to the next item? Okay, thank you. Next item of business is item E, which is of a similar nature. This is Brown Engineering, our contract with them. And this would be the contract, in a sense, replacing the contract that we had with Brown for the Green Line project. And this contract now would, would apply to the work that they are performing and will perform on the low pressure sewer and sewage treatment plant system. And so I see Harlow and Jeffrey Brown are here. If there are any questions, the agreement is modeled directly after the agreement we just approved for Schnabel. In fact, I sent, I gave Harlow a copy of that agreement and said, would you, would you consider adopting something similar? And what Harlow came back to us with is, is very similar, virtually identical. They have a little bit different insurance rates or coverages, I'm sorry, limits, and that would be something appropriate to engineer performing the kinds of projects they do versus dam projects. And so I, I felt it was appropriate. And, but otherwise, it does exactly the same thing, so I don't have to repeat. It creates this umbrella, a master agreement under which task order addendums would take place. Now, what's different, a little bit different about where we are with Schnabel is that, they've already begun working on this particular project because of the timeframes and the state mandate, you know, that we had to submit certain things by fixed deadlines, and they're working away on those things right now. And we authorized two tasks already. One had to do with, was titled project development and planning and project management. The other one was to do a massive engineering report that sort of comes to a new conclusion, I guess, about why it is that the town of Lake War has decided to pursue low pressure sewer collection and transmission system and to replace or possibly renovate the existing treatment plant. And, and this is a necessary requirement, this engineering report, for us to continue to sustain the loan funding, right, Jeffrey? That we have. It's a, it's a necessary requirement and they're just making us go through what seems to be the logical conclusion that this is the best alternative for us versus other things we might could do, right?
Correct.
Generally speaking? And so they're working away on this now and this should be done soon, right? Sometime soon? Yeah, okay. That's close enough. And so this, this does not necessarily speak to those first two tasks because they've already been authorized and moved with their own scope. But for any future work on this project, there would be task order addendums, just like we looked at and voted on, and they would work with us to do that.
That's correct. And one of those tasks would be identified in the engineering report that we're doing, and that would get the state to approve. The state has to approve that. And when they approve it, they will send a, a written letter with the schedule all the way out through construction, which will help us to do narratives on the individual tasks remaining that the project completed. And the other thing I would like to say to the council is, you and I have worked a lot on this and we have partnered with two other firms, Odom Associates, they have 13 folks, and a firm down in Wilmington called Cape Fear, which has done several low pressure systems in the east part of the state because they have, they have gravity flow issues. And they will be assisting us. And once this is approved, then we will move on to the next step to have subcontracts with these two firms. The Odom firm is going to help us in the field doing the actual, during installation, solving engineering problems. This type of system, you can't always put every little detail on a piece of paper when you're going to individual homes to do hookups. So the, so the construction part of this project is going to be quite extensive. And, but as we work through this, we, I'll be working with the mayor and the town manager to define these additional tasks to get this work completed.
Good, good. We left a good start.
I'd like to admit that we did add the first two tasks just in the last page.
As an exhibit, yeah. Just to document that we have them, yeah. All right, well, any, well, I, any questions or discussion? Anybody want to know anything else?
We're just getting paperwork done now, the design hasn't really started, right?
All right, well, I would entertain a motion if someone would like to make it.
On, on one of the pages, I noticed what is probably a typo, page 3-6, item 6, that is 6.3.
Yep.
It says GAD and that.
It should be CAD.
CAD, I thought, so, okay.
Yep, yep.
Other than that, it looked great. Good job on that, so. Should be CAD data, correct?
I get distracted.
Yeah, okay.
That's some lumps and hit score.
Oh.
Okay, well, do we have a motion here?
Yeah, I started, I'm sorry.
Did you make a motion?
I interrupted everybody.
Yeah, I make a motion, we accept the contract. All right, sure. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Moore. Any further discussion? If not, then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so that brings us.
Mayor, you may be excused.
You may be excused.
We'll send you one right back and we appreciate the confidence in the council very much.
Well, safe travels to you. I'm sure we'll be seeing you very soon. Thanks. All right, well, that, let's see. Let me get back to the agendas. All right, so that brings us now to item number F, which is Resolution 180911, that is amending Resolution Number 920324, creating a lake advisory board. And so, well, we've had that board around for a long time, so what is the background on this now? Shannon?
I got teed up for this, but I'm going to refer to Commissioner Butler.
Okay.
Yes, last December, we determined that this clause needed to be in all of our board enabling ordinances and except for those that were established by ordinance, I say enabling resolutions. If it's established by ordinance, this clause would not fit and therefore the zoning planning board and board of adjustment would not have this. All the other boards, however, would. We currently have it in the Parks and Recreation Enabling Ordinance and, or Enabling Resolution. And I talked to Michelle and since this hadn't been completed, we're going to try to do one each month until we get them done. The, however, with the proposed resolution, it's, it's not adding a new section two because I really think, first of all, section one starts off that section one is hereby added as follows, and there's nothing there. So that's a problem that the resolution has presented to us. Then it has. Then it has Section 2, and the title says adding a new Section 2, and then renumber everything afterwards. Actually, I don't, we could do it that way, but this item really fits under Section 4, and it should be an add-on to Section 4, in my opinion, in this current enabling ordinance. And I would recommend that we do that. Now, another thing that we do need to amend in the enabling ordinance, which is not, which all this is part of, ties into the next action. And that's where we're going to be authorizing the lake advisory board to approve markers of buoy requests and so on, and then those would be appealed to the Marine Commission. The enabling ordinance, as it is, does not authorize the lake advisory board to approve anything, only to advise and make recommendations. So, I think in Section 2, we need to add a subparAGRave G that says, review applications, approve as warranted, and determine placement of buoy request.
Okay.
And then that would give them the authority to approve those buoy requests, in my opinion. So, I think we need to revise the resolution with those amendments, and then assign it.
Okay. Do you want to just do that by motion? You just describe what you want to make those changes, and just do that?
Well, yeah, I make the motion that we approve those changes as I just discussed.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second? I think it's appropriate. Any discussion on that? All right, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Okay, so, that then brings us to the ordinance 180911, amending the lake structure regulations.
Right. Now, that ordinance, of course, the lake structure regulations already says that the lake advisory board were approving, so we cleaned that up, the enabling ordinance for the board, along with what we did in the Marine Commission. What we're doing here is, we're saying appeals of the lake advisory board decision shall be sent to the Marine Commission. And a legal question for you, William, if we do appeals from the lake advisory board to the Marine Commission, and they get denied by the Marine Commission, who is the next appellate authority for the citizens? Is it the town council, since we are the creation authority for the Marine Commission? Or does it automatically go to Superior Court at that point?
I don't know for certain the answer to that. There's also the Board of Adjustment statute that could come into play, it could, might go there. I wish I could answer that, but I can't, or I'm talking my head.
Okay. Well, of course, the state senate bill only authorized the creation of the Marine Commission, and told the town that we may create it.
Correct.
So, we're the authority over the Marine Commission. We determine, and we are the authority that generated the enabling ordinance for them, which we can amend at any time. So, it seems to me like that would then go to the council, which doesn't make sense since it's the same people.
That would be odd.
Right. I realize it would be odd, but my concern is sending appeals outside the town unnecessarily, which may not be, you know, I realize if the council denied it, it would then go to Superior Court anyway. I understand that.
Would be reviewing the next level of jurisdiction.
Right.
So, the appeals should come to council beginning.
As soon as it wins.
Yeah, if there was never Marine Commission, it'd go to council anyway.
Right.
Do we need to know the answer to that before we act on this?
No.
Oh, no, I think we can send it to the Marine Commission. It's just my concern.
Just what's the next step?
It has to go beyond the Marine Commission.
Okay.
And that's going to remain a concern, if you could at least give them that answer on that case.
Okay, it's appreciated. All right, so would someone like to make a motion on this ordinance?
I'll make a motion, ordinance, adopt the ordinance as discussed for number 1809-11, amending the lake structure regulations for the town of Lake War.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Weber. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. And that brings us to.
Bob's.
Number H, which is approval of Budget Amendment 232, two dam operator positions. Like the way that sounds.
Yeah, the reason I asked that that be done is, is we're transferring an amount of $39,000, but that doesn't paint the whole picture. We're talking about funding two full-time dam operator positions.
Correct.
Which were not authorized on the budget, and did it. And my concern was, this doesn't show what the total cost for the entire year for both positions is, including the benefit. And that's what I wanted to bring out in this session.
Yeah, sure.
Was what that is, and I understand how much.
Well, how we did that, when we do diligence on these two positions and what they possibly could do for the town, is that we're looking at a little over $110,000 salary and benefits for these two positions. One of the things we can do with these two positions is change the way we've been running the generators. We've been seeing that if we pay attention to these generators, we operate them at less efficiency, but we operate them longer versus operate them at 85% efficiency and actually turn them off when we're done. We believe we can get a gain on revenue. Last year, we generated, the water's got to be there, last year, we generated over $500,000 from the generators. With two operators running the generators differently to increase our efficiency of the generators, we believe we probably can at least gain 20%. If we gain 20%, and the water's there, that's $100,000 in revenue we can generate using these additional operators, because then they're on the job more and longer. So, okay, where's the $10,000 coming from? The $10,000 short? Well, that eliminates John Wilson, who was originally hired to be a mechanic and not an operator. He now has been serving as a backup operator for our single operator at the dam. We also will eliminate overtime for that operator. So, we save $50,000 by doing that. So, we end up in the black $30,000 with this move, if some of the assumptions hold true.
If I remember, a couple of years ago, I think overtime for one ran like $19,000 per year, and that was just the overtime for the dam. So, I don't remember what it was last year. It had been reduced, I think.
So, the ratio was about 20 overtime and 30 for the other. The other thing that it does is, it allows us to stay on the job and reduces risk. And that's something the state, something the state has been interested in, that we met with the local municipalities and talked about insurance for the dam. They wanted to see a different way that we've been operating the dam, and so this is part of that solution as well. So, when you take all that into consideration, we're reducing risk, we're increasing revenue, we're staying on the job longer. We're not in a situation of hitting on one person, which is a desirable way to happen. Take, for example, Florence. You've got, you've got one operator, and John Wilson who's saying, I don't want to do this anymore. I'll be your mechanic, I'll fix your little generator. I'm not going to be an operator any longer.
Okay.
We have one operator, he cannot stay on the job 24/7 for four or five days straight. It's impossible. So, this is a responsible thing to do.
Our payments to John are substantial, the operator duties and the overtime for him, based on his rate.
Yes. And those rates are going up.
Yeah.
Those rates are going up.
From Jim.
From him.
That's why I have the questions on it, and I appreciate that. And based on that, I have, I have no problem making a motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 232, to fund two full-time dam operator positions.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Second by Commissioner Kilby. Any further discussion? If there is no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore.
There he goes. He got a. Who's the second?
Second.
Second. All right, all right, so the, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you for hanging in there.